All right. Welcome to the October meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. Tonight, we are broadcasting live from Greenwich Town Hall. With me in the town hall meeting room are the individuals who make this virtual meeting happen. Alexis Vulgaris, our moderator pro tem is here. Kimberly Sazano, the Assistant Town Clerk, is with us. And our two tech experts, Parx Delance, Jenny Markin and Craig Jones, are at the controls. If you hear any ambient noise, we'll try and keep it at a minimum, but we are all together here. And the mic may pick up some of those sounds. Very exciting for us to be starting a hybrid return to an in-person meeting. The governor has issued an executive order allowing hybrid meetings with some in-person and some remote participation. Next month, we are going to invite the district tabulators to join us. It's totally voluntary. No one has to come, but if anyone is interested, we welcome you. As all members have received a call of the meeting tonight, the reading of the call will be omitted. I invite all members to join me in saying pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our September meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the draft minutes?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Hearing none?
What, Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry?
Yes, District Nine, Mr. Moderator. There are...
District Nine.
There are two changes to the minutes. I believe items seven and eight show the original items from the call and not the substitute resolutions that were actually presented to the meeting.
What number?
Seven and eight.
All right, you want to repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
Item seven and eight show the original text from the call, not the substitute resolutions that were actually presented to the meeting.
Okay. We'll make that change. Any other proposed changes? Hearing none? Is there any objection to Mr. Rainey's proposed amendment? That motion to amend may be adopted upon unanimous consent. With respect to the minutes as amended, is there any objection to the adoption of those amended minutes? Hearing none? The amended minutes may be adopted upon unanimous consent. All right, we have no announcements tonight. I did inform our district and committee chairs yesterday that based upon the reports received, I am recommending the following organization of our call. On the consent calendar, assuming there is no objection, I will designate items three, five, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen. If those remain on the consent calendar after my designation, we will hear no committee reports and have no discussion on those. I will recommend that we suspend the rules to combine items four and six for voting purposes. And that would leave to take up separately items seven, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. So at this time, I will now designate the following items for our consent calendar. Get the next slide in. All right, so those are the consent calendar items. Next slide. So item three is a resolution appointing Mary Shaw Marks to be an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring October 31, 2024. Item five is a resolution amending the town code to establish a slow no wait zone between Great Captain Island and Cormorant Reef. Item eight is a resolution accepting a gift totaling $5,100 related to the fire department. Next slide, item nine. This is a resolution appointing Jake Allen to be a member of the Greenwich High School Security Vestabule Building Committee for a term beginning upon appointment. Item 10, a resolution appointing Maureen. All these following resolutions are appointing members to the Greenwich High Security Vestabule Building Committee with a term beginning upon appointment. Item 10 is the appointment of Maureen Banana. Item 11, the appointment of Ashley Cole. Item 12, the appointment of Louis Contadino. Item 13, the appointment of Stephanie Coe. And the last of the consent calendar items, a resolution appointing Stephen Walco to that building committee. Pursuant to our rules, is there any objection to the designation of those items to our Hearing none? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Or district tabulators, consent calendar items three, five, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen, and proceed poll your delegation. And as you know, our procedure is to allow five minutes of uninterrupted voting time, so we will start the clock then. You want to get that slide up? All right. Hopefully, we're finishing up the voting on the consent calendar items. I understand, is it Don Wyko, District 12, would like to be recognized? Can we elevate or can we turn on the audio for Mr. Wyko? I'm trying to find Mr. Wyko. Is that W-H-Y?
It says name.
Not Wyko, yeah. Mr. Wyko, are you there?
Yes, I'm here now. Can you hear me?
Yes. For what purpose do you ask to be recognized?
Oh, my machine keeps going back and forth. I have no intention... I don't have a question. I do not have a question.
Okay. All right, thank... All right. So we're still waiting on the tabulation of the vote on the consent calendar items. We will move along to the combined calendar items. The recommendation was to combine items four and six for voting purposes. In order to do that, we require a motion to suspend the rules. Is there such a motion? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items four and six for voting purposes. Next slide, please. The motion to suspend the rules is not itself debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Is there any objection? I will ask this. Is there any objection to suspending the rules and combining items four and six for If any of our attendees have an objection, just notify your representative. All right. I'll assume that that motion to suspend the rules may be adopted upon unanimous consent. So both of these items were before us in September. So item four, we don't need anyone to present it. Item four, which is a motion, I'm sorry, which is a resolution to amend our charter to increase the number of members of the Board of Human Services from seven to nine. So that resolution is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Who would like to go first? All right. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Our committee has nothing further to add to the report we provided in September. Our vote at that time was 11-1-0 with District Seven voting no.
Thank you. Kim Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
At our September meeting, we discussed the merits and voted on them, but we did not have a copy of the language of the revised rule, so we postponed the vote until this month's meeting. At this month's meeting, we discussed the merits again. We were told at our September meeting that the board would like to increase its membership in order to achieve more community visibility, greater diversity, and increase board presence in the community, as well as help reduce the workload. At our October meeting, we had the help of Alexis Vulgaris, moderator pro tem, Vincent Marino, Town Attorney, and Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney. One of the committee's members stated that the number of board members should not be used as an instrument to add diversity. The selectmen can nominate a more diverse group of board members if the goal is to achieve diversity. Another committee member noted that this is a voluntary board, and there is no cost to the town to add members. Another member noted that the board currently completing service on at least seven committees, and there is a need to increase the manpower. So we took a vote on legal order. It was 12-0-0. On the merits, it was 9-3-0. The districts one, two, and five voting no for the reasons we already stated.
All right, thank you. Discussion on item four. Asking our district representatives, is there any interest to discuss item four? Hearing none? Before I present item six, I do have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items three, five, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 15. Those in favor, 218 opposed, zero abstaining, two. The consent calendar items have carried. The next combined, the second and last of the combined items is item six. And this is a resolution amending the rules of the RTM regarding the activities of the Finance Committee. So that is currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered item six? And unless I hear otherwise, we'll go in alphabetical order. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land... I'm sorry, that's seven, excuse me. Oh, this is just Legislative and Rules, okay. Kim Bergweger, Legislative and Rules Committee.
On Monday evening, we had, again, had the help of Alexis Vulgaris, Vince Ben Marino. We had considered this again at our September meeting when we moved to make four amendments to the proposed language. One amendment would revise the paragraph headed "Capital Budget Responsibilities" by inserting in the last bullet line the word "general" in front of the word "fund", so it would read "Review Proposed Changes in the Town's Debt and General Fund Balance Those changes, all those changes that we proposed were approved at the September meeting. However, the language got scrambled in the call, in the October call, which omitted the word "fund," and in the October explenos, which omitted the word "general." So the committee approved motions to amend the fourth and fifth bullet points under the Capital Budget Responsibilities paragraph. And our vote on legal order as amended was 12-0-0. Our vote on the merits was 11-1-0, with District Three voting no because a member had committed, had commented that the Finance Committee should focus on more creative means of finding budget solutions and efficiencies. And now you can see on the screen the amendments that I was going to move to adopt.
All right. So I just wanted you to confirm, we do see in red a comma being added and the word "fund" inserted between "general" and "balance." Are those, those are the changes?
Those are the changes, yes.
All right. We can, so I'm now recognizing you. You are making a motion to amend item six.
Well, we're making a motion, the, the, we're making a motion to amend it as it appeared in the call and/or the explenos because the second amendment was, was, which was approved before, didn't come through in the call this time. Putting the comma in, however, is a new amendment.
Okay. So with that explanation, we understand one is simply making accurate the change that was made in September, and the other change is new.
Correct.
We penned up a motion to amend upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to the Legislative and Rules motion to amend as you see on the
Moderator, District One? Yes. Carl Carlson has a comment.
All right. Can we elevate Carl Carlson, District One, please? Mr. Carlson, you need to unmute yourself and then speak. Mr. Carlson, can you unmute yourself, please?
Do I have to vote on it? I can't...
Dr. Carlson, District One, what can we do for you?
Pardon?
We were told you, we were told you wanted to be recognized.
No, I did not.
All right, thanks. All right. Hearing no, no objections to the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend. That may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Now, discussion on item six. If, you know, we put up sign-up sheets online. We had no sign-ups for any of the combined items. So if anyone wants to speak, you've got to have to quickly notify your district representative who will then notify us. Is there any discussion on item six? All right, hearing none. I would normally call for the vote, but I was alerted. I had asked if there was any objection to combining these items. And I was told there may have been through raised hands. So I will now, we can divide, having combined these already. We could divide them and take them up separately. So I just want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to participate. Is there anybody who wants to take these items up separately? Please quickly notify, if you're an attendee, quickly notify your district representative. And that would entail us voting on a motion to divide.
Hi, this is Jude from District Ten. We have a request to have them separated.
All right. We would like to hear the reasons. Or put it this way, I am offering an opportunity for whoever is making this motion to be heard.
That would be Stetlana Wasserman.
Okay, could we allow Ms. Wasserman to speak? All right, when, when we recognize you, we will allow you to speak, but you have to then unmute yourself on your end.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. These are just two very different committees with very different scopes of work, and it seems like they should be taken up separately.
Well, the whole purpose of combining items is to save us the time of voting. If they're both going to pass and there's no objection, that's, that's, we're not saying they're related. We combine many unrelated things solely for the purpose of expediency. And the purpose of dividing them would be to allow someone to vote no on one of them and yes on the other.
Yes, that's why I'm making the request.
All right. Is there a second to this motion to divide the combined items?
Mr. Chairman, I have Nancy, Ms. Nancy Burke in District Two, who says, yes, separately, I agree with Ms. Wasserman.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion to divide? We have to vote on this as the carry-by majority vote. Further discussion on the motion to divide items four and six? Any further discussion? All right.
Mr. Moderator, it's Victoria Quake in District Six.
Go ahead.
I have someone in our district who would also like to please take them up, is two different votes.
Okay, so I'm going to call for a vote. I'm asking, does anyone want to be heard as to their reasons why? We are going to take a vote. Any further discussion? All right, we do not have a slide for this.
No, we do.
Oh, we do?
We do. Anticipating as to how can...
So go down. It's in the back of the deck? It says...
While we're looking for this, will the district tabulators please mark your voting Motion to divide items four and six. If you are in favor of taking them up and voting on them separately, you vote yes. If you want to just take your one vote, you vote no. And we have, and we have a... Right, can, can we have a clock? So we're now voting on a motion to divide. We do not have a slide, so everyone needs to pay attention. All right, good time. Does everybody understand? If you want to take them up separately, vote yes. If you want to, we're not voting on the items now themselves, just procedurally, are we going to take them up separately or one? All right, I just wanted to let everybody know, we need, we can't proceed until we have the result of this vote. We're still waiting for several districts to report in. So we're going to just play the music. As soon as we have the, the result, we'll continue. Ryan Oka, we're just, we want to verify that this is you. You need to be elevated, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So you will be elevated to panelist. All right. What's the latest vote total?
62, 134, 0.
62, 134, 0? All right, so we're still waiting on District One, but as, the votes are 62 in favor, 134 against.
You received my vote.
This, this motion will fail. And we're, we will, I will report what the final vote is, but we're going to now take a vote on...
69.
What is it?
69, 145.
All right, it just came in. The vote on the motion to divide items four and six, those in favor, 69 opposed, 145 abstaining, zero. That motion to divide has failed, which means we will now take a vote, one vote, on the combined items together, four and six. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards, combine calendar items four and six, and proceed poll your delegation? All right, welcome back. The votes are still coming in, but we will now continue. We'll take up the first of the separate items. That is item number seven, and that's the nuisance ordinance. This, again, pursuant to our second reading rule, was before us in September, so we do not need anyone to present it and move and second it. We will take up these separate items in numerical order. So the nuisance ordinance is currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? And if somebody wants to jump out of alphabetical order, just call it out. Happy to let you proceed. Otherwise, Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening.
So the Land Use Committee heard that this item was be, it was going to be referred to a special committee, and therefore, we did not take it up or vote on it.
All right, and you did discuss the proposal.
Let me just check that.
Is that your report then, Mr. Berg?
Yeah. Yep, I stand by that report.
All right. Kim Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
As everyone else did, we considered this item at our September meeting and had several concerns. The town currently has a nuisance ordinance that defines nuisances, and then it establishes a nuisance abatement officer who is charged with identifying and abating nuisances. If the nuisance abatement officer identifies a nuisance, the officer gives the owner written notice. And if the nuisance has not been abated, the officer sends the owner a citation directing the owner to abate the nuisance within 30 days. If the abatement is not completed within the 30 days, the nuisance abatement officer will abate the nuisance and charge the owner for all the costs incurred in the, in the abatement. The officer can also fine the owner for an amount not to exceed $100 for each offense. Owners have the right to appeal to a hearing officer, who shall conduct the hearing, in the words of the ordinance, quote, "expeditiously and in the order and form and with such methods of proof as the hearing officer deems fair and appropriate." These procedures currently apply to nuisances such as shrubbery, garbage, junk, motor cars, and similar items in somebody's yard. The item, this item would amend the ordinance to extend these procedures to buildings and structures. However, members of Legislative and Rules did not think these procedures were appropriate for buildings and structures, which are more complex and could be caused by any number of understandable reasons. Additionally, the town is currently applying a more balanced set of procedures that are not required by the ordinance. For example, the town, town manager is a, running a coordinated effort, a comprehensive approach to look at each affected property, which involve, and involves all affected departments, including planning and zoning, social services, public works, police department, legal, and, and others. So there's many other ways to deal with this than just having one single nuisance abatement officer. After the September meeting, members of the L and R Committee proposed a number of proposed changes to the ordinance, which would accommodate blight, but in a way that was a little more balanced and coordinated. We spoke also with the town attorney, who has suggested that we form a special committee to work with the town to revise the nuisance ordinance. At our October meeting, we had the help of Alexis Vulgaris, moderator pro tem, and Ben Marino, the town attorney. We voted to approve a motion to form such a special committee, and I will make that motion at the appropriate time. The vote on legal order and the merits of the motion was 12-0-0.
Thank you very much. Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you. Recognizing that the Legislative and Rules Committee was proposing the formation of a special committee for this item, Health and Human Services did not discuss the issue further beyond selecting Sam Tam of District Four. further beyond selecting Sam Tam of District Four.
I think you're muted.
Yeah. Yeah. This one, I'm unmuted, but you get back feed on that one.
All right, so I think everybody heard you. All right, and is that, that's it?
Right.
All right, thank you. All right, and the Town Services, uh, report, Richard Newman, Chair.
Good evening, everyone. Town Services, uh, on our first read, did vote eleven, zero, one for the item, knowing that Legislative and Rules was bringing this, uh, for a special committee. We did not take it up beyond, uh, appointing a new, uh, member of our committee, Diana Singer, who's an alternate from District Ten, uh, to be part of the committee, uh, that Legislative and Rules is forming. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger.
Okay, uh, the motion that we, that the Legislative and Rules is proposing, that Item Seven, the resolution to amend Section six C dash two H, of, well, look at, you can see the language, amendment to, um, and sorry, the resolution to amend Section six C two H of Chapter six C, nuisances of the code of ordinances, be referred to a special committee to be formed by the Chairs of Land Use, Legislative and Rules, Health and Human Services, and Town Services Committees, to appoint two members from Legislative and Rules and one from each of the other named standing committees, to work with the Town Law Department to revise the nuisance ordinance to address blight, and the item be brought back to the December twenty twenty RTM meeting.
All right, thank you. And the text of that motion to refer is on the screen before us. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Discussion on the Legislative and Rules motion to refer Item Seven to this special committee of five. I do have two people who signed up to speak on Item Seven, so at this point, I will recognize them if they want to, uh, to speak on, what, what now is before us is the motion to refer. So, Bob McKnight, District Four, to be followed by Adam Leader of District Eleven. If you, uh, care to address this motion to refer, I will give you that opportunity. Bob McKnight.
Thanks, Tom. At this time, I will withdraw my, uh...
All right, so you, you don't wanna, all right. Adam Leader, District Eleven.
Hi, I support referring this to the special committee. That's all I'll say at this time.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to refer Item Seven to a special committee? All right, next slide, please. We can adopt this by unanimous consent, so I will ask, are there any objections to this motion to refer? If there is a single objection, we will vote on the motion to refer. I will wait for any attendee to contact the district representative. All right, I'm not hearing any objection, so that motion to refer may be adopted upon unanimous consent. That disposes of Item Seven tonight. All right, before we continue, I do have the result of the, oh, like, did I read this already, about on the combined, combined items, all right? This is item, uh, Items Four and Six, those in favor, one ninety-three, opposed, fourteen, abstaining nine. Items Four and Six have carried. The next separate item to come before us is Item Fourteen. Do we have someone to present this resolution? Is it our first selectman? First selectman, Fred Camillo. You need to unmute yourself.
Good evening, can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, resolve that the following...
I thought he's not on the map?
Not yet.
All right, so we're gonna bring you up to the panel.
Okay, all right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, we concede.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying to get this thing off here.
This is Item Fourteen.
Yes, I'm, it's, it's being partially blocked by, uh, the side here. I'll try my best to read it. Uh, resolve that the following person be nominated, oops, there we go, uh, now it's gone completely. Um, I don't know what happened there.
All right. So, this is, this is the same as it appears on the call, is that correct?
Yeah, resolve that the following person be nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed as a, it's, uh, as a voting member of the Greenwich High School Security Vestibule Building Committee for a term beginning upon appointment, Megan Galetta.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item Fourteen has been moved and seconded, may, may we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with our Appointments Committee, Bob McKnight, Chairman?
Thank you, Tom. Your Appointments Committee interviewed Mrs. Galetta on October thirteenth to be considered a candidate for the Greenwich High School Security Vestibule Building Committee. We discussed the need for security at this point of entrance, as well as all other points of, uh, entry into the school. She pointed out that her knowledge of security hardware would be an asset to the committee. We also delved into her volunteerism through serving on many local PTAs, and with one of her children now attending Greenwich High. Our vote to recommend was eleven, zero, one.
Thank you. Kimberly Blank, Chair of our Education Committee.
Good evening. We interviewed Ms. Galetta jointly with the Public Works Committee. Ms. Galetta has been a volunteer in the schools and a coach at the Boys and Girls Club. She has worked in the technology industry for over twenty years. During our interview, she was asked about her involvement with an organization called Hugs Over Masks. She said that she had attended meetings of this organization, which was started by a friend. This group questions the wisdom and health implications of requiring masks to be worn in various settings, including schools. When asked if she would wear a mask at Greenwich High, she said that if masks were required to be worn on school grounds, she would wear one. Also during our interview, Ms. Galetta said that she believed that she could contribute to the committee because of her background in technology, since the project may use various security technologies like key swipe systems. When further asked about her work experience, she explained that she had worked in sales and strategy. Our committee voted five, six, one on Ms. Galetta. Her nomination did not pass. Districts one, two, four, five, and seven voted in favor, Districts three, six, eight, nine, eleven, and twelve voted against, and District Ten abstained. Those who opposed Ms. Galetta's nomination raised two separate concerns. Some said that they questioned her judgment, particularly, particularly regarding school safety, because of her affiliation with Hugs Over Masks, and felt that she was evasive in answering their questions about this. Others felt that she overstated her experience in technology and ability to contribute technical expertise to the committee, since her background was in sales rather than a more technical role. Some objected to her nomination based on both grounds. Those in favor of Ms. Galetta's nomination did not think that her possible concerns about masks had much bearing on her ability to do the job required on the building committee. Some noted that she did not actually state a personal viewpoint regarding mask requirements, only that she had attended meetings where they asked questions about their safety and efficacy. They also said that having a sales role at a technology company could provide a useful background for the committee, noting that salespeople often need to have deep product knowledge and knowledge of competitive products. The delegate from District Ten abstained, saying that she did not feel that she had enough information to endorse Ms. Galetta based on the brief interview. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Spilo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
That was a very comprehensive report. Public Works met with Ms. Galetta jointly with, um, education, and, um, as you heard, uh, there were questions raised, uh, by members of District Twelve, questioning whether Ms. Galetta's attended gatherings that are politically anti-mask in nature. I think Ms. Galetta seemed unsure about the political nature of this. She did confirm that she is, would wear masks wherever required. Um, and, uh, in, after, after the meeting, um, and as, as Ms. Blank said, there was questions about, um, whether she had any technical ability being, uh, in sales and marketing. Um, after the meeting adjourned to private Public Works meeting, Public Works voted six, five, one in favor of Ms. Galetta. Those just, District citing no cited the same concerns as Ms. Blank noted. Um, District One abstained the vote. I don't have anything further.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Fourteen, we did have, uh, five people sign up to speak, so I will recognize Kimberly Blank, District Seven, to be followed by Michael Spilo, District Eleven.
Thank you. I don't know Ms. Galetta outside of this process, but I want to speak in favor of her nomination, because I'm very concerned about the reasons raised for rejecting her. We are lucky in this town to get so much free labor from our volunteers. I can't imagine what our tax burden would be if we actually had to pay people to sit on the various boards, commissions, and committees. When someone volunteers to do a job, my view is that we should generally be fast to say thank you before they change their minds. So I think we are heading down a very bad path if we start to look too closely at volunteers' viewpoints on matters unrelated to the work at hand. On the Education Committee, many of the members who voted against Ms. Galetta voted no, because they assumed she disagrees with mask requirements. She never actually stated a personal view on masks, and quite honestly, I don't care what her view is. I also don't care what her view is on childhood immunizations, gun control laws, or HIV education in the schools. All of these are matters which some could say go to school health and safety, and none of them, in my opinion, have any bearing on her ability to contribute to the Greenwich High School Security Vestibule Committee. I know these are emotional times, but we have to be tolerant of people who hold views different from our own. There should be no litmus test of a person's so-called judgment, based on the fact that they disagree with us on matters that we care about. The other objection raised by some on the Education Committee is that they don't think she will be able to contribute much of a technology perspective, because her background is in sales rather than a technical or programming role. I think that this shows a misunderstanding both of what people in tech sales do, and of what kind of tech background could be useful to the committee. She isn't being asked to install a high-tech security system, she's being asked to help look at bids and evaluate choices. I'm sure her industry experience will help her to do this. Based on my brief interview with her at our joint committee meeting, Ms. Galetta seems as capable of serving on the committee as any of the other members we've appointed tonight. We are in danger of making volunteering for boards in this town a true case of no good deed goes un... if we continue down this path, forcing volunteers to broadly defend their viewpoints as part of the confirmation process. I suggest that we all say thank you to Ms. Galetta and confirm her quickly before she changes her mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Spilo, District Eleven, to be followed by Hale McSherry, District Five.
Uh, yes, I can't, uh, speak much. Uh, I, I, I think the issue of masks is hardly relevant, but I can add, uh, a lot of insight on the issue of, um, qualifications of a person who operates at a high level in a sales and marketing, um, position in a technology company. Having, um, been Vice President of Engineering at McAfee and Netgear, and having started several, uh, technology startups, I've hired such people and worked with those people, and I can tell you that, um, in technology companies in particular, the direction of the company and the product, uh, design and specifications come out of the marketing departments. The product manager will be from the marketing arm, not the engineering arm typically. And so, salespeople will tend to have as much knowledge of the features and operations of the products that the companies manufacture as the, the, uh, engineering department would. And so, her level, a, and if they don't, then it's a problem for the company, because that's who sets the direction of the company, often. Uh, in fact, in every large company that I've worked at. Uh, so Ms. Galetta is, uh, by saying that she has significant knowledge in technology, security, and, uh, products related, uh, she's, she's being accurate to, in my experience. And, uh, I, I think questioning that was, uh, more uninformed, hopefully, and, um, should, this should serve as, as, uh, better familiarity with how technology is managed in, in technology companies. I would recommend her approval.
Thank you. Hale McSherry, District Five, to be followed by Fred Camillo, our first selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Hale McSherry from District Five. I rise to speak against this appointment. Last week, RTM members questioned Ms. Galetta over her participation in the Hugs Over Masks group, which meets in person in Old Greenwich without face coverings in violation of state public health mandates. I'm inclined to agree that the appointee's feelings towards these government public health mandates are irrelevant to her work on a building committee, but it was her characterization of the group that gives some members pause. In her description of the group as a non-political, friendly gathering, the appointee mentioned that the group met to discuss the dangers of wearing masks. Holding the belief that wearing a covering over one's face, nose, and mouth to prevent contracting or spreading a deadly respiratory disease which is spread through the air is dangerous, should raise questions. The RTM serves as a check on the Board of Selectmen's nomination, and we are charged with making sure that we have the right people for the job. Seeing as this appointment is for a committee dealing with public safety, I strongly feel that the appointee's assessment of public danger, or lack thereof, is most relevant to the RTM's decision on her appointment. Thank you.
Fred Camillo, our first selectman, to be followed by Megan Galetta.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I speak strongly in support of Megan Galetta to, uh, serve on the Greenwich High School Security Vestibule, uh, Building Committee. She was approved unanimously by the Board of Selectmen, and she came, just like the other members, highly recommended by members of our community. Uh, Megan has spent over twenty years working for some top tech firms, uh, and certainly specializing in security solutions, big data analytics, and cloud technology. Uh, so she is a perfect fit for this committee. Um, what really disturbs me is the last speaker, uh, alluded to, uh, and unfortunately, uh, didn't, uh, do anything to change my concerns. We go down a dangerous path in this town if we start to question people's personal views that have nothing to do with the committee, commission, board, or task force that they seek to volunteer on. We are by and large a, a government of volunteers, and God help us if this becomes the norm. So please, I ask everybody to strongly support somebody that's very, very deserving of sitting on this committee, and will certainly do good work along with the other ones that were nominated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, excellent. And I don't, I thought my camera was on, I don't know if it's...
I don't, she can't. All right, so they're, they are elevating you to be a panelist, and the camera will
Perfect. Hi, everyone. Thank you again, um, for, um, for considering me, and thank you for everyone for your support. I am more than thrilled to be meeting with you all this evening, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you again. I'm very thrilled again for this opportunity to be working on the, uh, the building in the Vestibule Committee. To me, I've always been very passionate... To me, I've always been very passionate about the town and the safety of Greenwich High School as my children have gone through the high school. Just a little bit about me, I live in the North Myannis area. I've, my kids have gone, my husband and I have raised four amazing children, and we've had our kids go through, you know, the Greenwich schools. And obviously, along the way, safety and security, it's always on our minds as parents, right? We're just, we're just always, you know, extremely concerned. Together, we all weathered the Newtown horrific incident. That was while my kids were in school. We, and then there was even one time, just nothing, it turned out to be, you know, nothing major, however, it was a bit of a scare at the high school, an incident that was probably about maybe six years ago roughly where they had a lockdown. So those things have always been on my mind, and it's always been a passion of mine, given both my role as a parent and then my background in technology and security technology specifically. So I do appreciate the opportunity. As was stated earlier by some of the members, I have been very active in the town. I love to be involved civically and really just give back. That's just somewhere, that's where I come from. I really believe in giving back to the community, and one way in which I did that was through athletics. So I've been very, an athlete myself. I played basketball in college. I've also played volleyball. I've played softball. I've played many sports. And so, I felt, along with my husband, we volunteered at the Boys and Girls Club by both, and very directly with Mike Gerald. We know him well. And we ran a travel team for the girls, and probably over the course of about, somewhere between, you know, five to six years, and really, really enjoyed that experience. We would also do some clinics and such at the club as well. He would find us there quite often, and even in fact, one year, my husband and I were nominated as, with the Volunteer Award at their annual dinner for our volunteerism and for really being on-call and raising the bar for the women's, the girls' basketball program there. So that was something that we just both felt very passionate about, and we really, truly enjoyed it. In addition to that, I've coached with my husband at the GBA as well. And in addition to that, I've, was a board member of the North Myannis PTA. I've been on many PTA committees and class mom probably too many times to remember with having four children, and truly enjoyed all of those experiences that I had at the schools and during that time. Been on numerous class trips, including Washington DC, Philadelphia. It was a thrill. I'm sorry, not Washington DC, parents not allowed. However, been to Philadelphia, and that was wonderful. So with regards to my technology background, I think, as someone that's been in the industry for over 20 years, I think, and I've held many roles, sales, business development, marketing, as well as very strategic roles, including where I am in my current role. I'm very much, I report to a C-level executive, so I report to the Chief Revenue Officer of my company. I sit on his leadership team and attend weekly strategy sessions with the global team and the CEO, and we plan the strategy and make very key decisions for the organization. I am tasked to make very quick decisions. I am tasked to make decisions for a global workforce, and I engage with our very strategic partners, including Amazon, Microsoft, Google, and many other large organizations. So I'm tasked and I'm called to make very big strategic decisions that include whether we build on one cloud versus another and where we're going to integrate our technology. So I am very deeply enabled on the technology that I am currently involved with, and I have very deep roots in security technology, including authentication and authorization solutions, which would then back-end into provisioning and de-provisioning solutions. So understanding what the overall population is, building access, key card access, back-ending that into systems that can, again, add users and remove users from systems. I'm trying to boil it down so that people can understand what I'm talking about. In addition to that, also being able to, it would be very, very easy for me to evaluate proposals from numerous companies and to even interview the vendors and understand the solutions that are being presented if there were those that are budgeted and being considered, and then also consider where they may integrate into a broader system and the broader systems in the backend. And as I had mentioned to some other people, that may be perceived to be very, cost-efficient upfront, but may be very costly to manage in the long run. So I would take all of those into consideration, thinking both the short-term needs but also the long-term maintenance, management, and ongoing costs. So there's many things that are, that I can really add value when it comes to the technology component of this, and to me, it just, it's just thrilling. It's exciting. With regards to the mask organization, I just want to let you all know that I comply, completely comply with all mask mandates. In fact, you may see me around town. This is my camo mask, and I wear this everywhere I go. It's usually in my pocket, and it's in my car, and I wear it everywhere I go. I'm not about harming anyone in the public and those with any compromised immune systems. That's not, that's not at all what I am about. The reason that we've come together as a group was really a group of parents that have been extremely concerned about their own children being able, and most of the parents that attend our group have children with special needs of some sort. Some very, you know, severe needs, children that have autism and others that have respiratory issues, including asthma and some other issues, some that are even just allergic to different materials of masks, and it's extremely uncomfortable. So we started to come together at the very beginning of September. There is an organization that a friend of mine is involved in, and she asked me to attend, and this group. And we come together and we share different perspectives. We share links to information. Some of the parents just want to vent and be there as a resource for each other. And we really talk about, you know, how do I get my, some, some parents are concerned, how do I get, you know, to how to get my kid through school six to eight hours a day, taking breaks from the masks, speaking to their different administrators and whatever. So we've just become a resource. And we've never, we may meet out, we're meeting at a park in the open air. It's a public park, like Benny Park, and in many cases, you will see in the parks as well, parents either walking dogs, meeting together as groups, wedding groups of 50 even and larger that we've encountered, taking, you know, pictures of, you know, and et cetera. We've never been more than 20 people, and we are socially distanced, and we're out in the open air. So we're not really breaking any mandates or rules, and we're just coming together to share perspectives, and that's really, that's really all we're doing. We're not a radical organization. I'm not a radical person. That's not in my makeup. I'm a mom that's, you know, full, you know, working full-time, raising my children, keeping everyone healthy, keeping everyone sane, and, and, you know, just very civic-minded and, you know, would really love to be a part of this committee. In addition to that, you know, I feel that some of the questions that came up were really unrelated to the task at hand and to this committee, and I just really wanted to say that I, you know, I do appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate your consideration, and I really hope that I have the opportunity to lend my expertise here on this committee, and in addition to that, my enthusiasm. So thank you once again, and again, you will see me around town with my, you may not recognize me, but you may recognize my mask. So I hope I have the opportunity to work with everyone, and thank you again for your time.
All right, very much. Next slide, please. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards, Item 14, and proceed poll your delegation? All right. We do not yet have the results, but we are going to continue with the next separate item, which is Item 16. This is a labor contract. Do we have a resolution on this? Is this our... Emmett Hipson to present this? Mr. Hipson, welcome.
Thank you. Is there...
So our practice, just have someone introduce it. You can just...
So, resolve that the representative town meeting exercising its authority pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7474B hereby rejects the funds necessary to implement the terms of the Town Greenwich Municipal Employee Association Collective Bargain Agreement covering fiscal year 1920, fiscal year 2021. Said funds having previously been appropriated and adopted in fiscal year 19 and 20 and 2021 budgets. In addition thereto, the representative town meeting rejects the funds necessary to implement the terms of the Town Greenwich Municipal Employees Association Collective Bargain Agreement covering period fiscal year 21, 22, and fiscal year 22, 23, subject to the budgetary processes prescribed in the Town Charter.
All right, it's the same as it appears on the call. Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption and resolution? Resolution on Item 16 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? We'll begin with the Labor Contracts Committee. Dan Ozmer, Chairman.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Emmett. The Labor Contracts Committee met at 1:00 PM on October 13th to review Item 16, the GMEA contract. It's important to note that we'd also met in September to look at this contract, but ultimately, because the unions had not ratified them, the, both these contracts were moved to the October meeting. One thing important to note is that the way the resolution is written, it, the resolution reads to reject the contract, therefore, a yes vote on resolution would reject the contract and no vote would accept it. Emmett Hipson, Greenwich's new labor bargaining specialist, presented the item on behalf of the first selection. There's some key things to remember in this contract. First, the cost of the contract over four years is $144 million. This is a very, very large contract. In contrast, the nurses' contract from last month was $20 million. The contract covers 258 full-time and 127 part-time employees across both the town and the schools. The contract covers the years fiscal '20 to '23. The contract is retroactive to July 1, 2019. So as a four-year contract, if this is approved, the contract, it'll be basically a year and a half retroactive with another two and a half years remaining. The negotiations for this contract started in May 2019, and a tentative agreement was reached in August 2020. That is what is before us. The town made 22 different proposals in the negotiation. After COVID-19, the town added a request to reduce the gross, I'm sorry, the general wage increase in year two, which is fiscal year '21 to zero. So previously, there'd been an increase in that year. After the COVID hit in March, the town did request that the union accept a lower amount, and the union did agree to that in return for a reduction in some of the healthcare contributions. The general wage increases are for the first year 1.75%, second year zero, third year 2%, fourth year 2.15%, for a total of 5.9% over the four years. The average increase is 1.475%. Including steps, wages actually increased 8.32%. Just as a reminder, steps are the raises that employees get for years of service. The town was able to increase the hours an employee must work before being eligible for overtime from 35 hours to 37 and a half hours. The LCC and the BOC over the last several years have noted this as a situation where, you know, Greenwich was providing, you know, favorable economics to the union that were increasing the cost to the town. Forty hours is more typical. We were not able to get from 35 to 40, but the town was able in this contract to get from 35 to 37 and a half. We would hope in the future the town could get that number to 40, which is the market standard. The town did negotiate a number of small work rule changes, incorporating performance evaluations into promotions, step movements, and conditioning employees' right to transfer. The healthcare costs in this contract are projected to increase by almost 33, 33 and change percent if compounded. For the first two years, and we know these already, the increases were 7.34%, 6.5% in the second year. Our Finance Committee has projected that the next two years will be 8.63% and then 7.64%. So the increases in the healthcare costs are very material. The employee's share of the healthcare premium does increase in this contract from 10% in the third year to 12.5% and the fourth year to 14%. It's important to note that this healthcare share payment is significantly lower than the private market and significantly lower than other benchmark towns. With benefits, the cost of the contract increases are 2.48%, 1.68%, 3.47%, and 3.5% respectively, for a total of over 11% over four years. That's an average increase of 2.78%. With inflation at under 2%, that's pretty much twice the rate of CPI. The LCC was provided with limited benchmarking information to analyze this contract. It's important to note that there are 70 different job titles in this bargaining unit, eight job grades, and nine steps. When we did look at what benchmarking information we had, Town of Greenwich employees were either the highest paid or amongst the highest paid amongst our peer communities and pay the lowest share of healthcare premium. They also enjoy an excellent state partnership plan that has very low deductibles. The LCC discussed the contract, and I just want to note that we have, next item is coming up as Item 17. So many of the issues that were discussed for Item 16 are very similar to those in Item 17. So I just want to, I will try to limit my discussion of the discussion for Item 17, so it's important that people, when they're listening to this discussion that the LCC had, understand that a lot of this will apply to the next item as well. The LCC was disappointed in the lack, disappointed in the lack of information and benchmarking. Members expressed concern that the town may not have had all the information they needed to negotiate effectively from the beginning. Members noted that the contract was very rich. Members noted that the cost of the contract, 2.78% per year, was well over inflation, and this would either lead to service cuts, headcount reductions, or taxes increasing faster than inflation. Emmett did note that the town did achieve a GWI lower than the average settlement in the state and lower than the average arbitration award. While the members noted that, and know the fact that we did get GWIs lower than the state average in terms of rate, the members noted that the average settlement shouldn't apply here because we have by far the highest wages and benefit packages. Specifically, we also provide a supplemental 401K plan benefit that no other of the 168 Connecticut towns provide. That benefit in aggregate costs the town $2 million per year. Members were glad to see that the town did achieve a zero GWI in fiscal '21 when they opened... Members were glad to see that the town did achieve a zero GWI in fiscal '21 when they opened, we opened the contract. The LCC was disappointed to see that healthcare share increased to only 14% in year four. The LCC had expected higher contributions in line with the 16% that was achieved with the GOCA and the GEA contract negotiations. The GEA, just for everyone's reference, are the teachers. The members were concerned that no contract changes around work at home and issues of essential workers were included in the contract post-COVID-19. Emmett noted that only terms that were raised when the contract negotiation started could be negotiated. In other words, the initial discussion points were determined over a year and a half ago before COVID. So the town could not achieve those changes. The LCC acknowledged that the contract was mostly baked by the time Emmett joined. The LCC noted that the town was challenging in negotiation process because the transition period from Al Kavva leaving and a transition to Emmett. Lastly, the LCC did note that they were impressed with the work that Emmett was doing and looked forward to working with him in the future. The LCC members, many members also felt that the LCC goals were ignored. The LCC then took a vote on the contract. The LCC actually took two votes. On the merits of the contract, in other words, is this a good contract for the town or not? The LCC voted six to one to reject the contract. One member who voted against that felt that the town had achieved their goals. The LCC also voted on whether to postpone the contract indefinitely. In the analysis on whether to postpone the contract indefinitely, the LCC focused not on whether this was a good contract or not. The LCC looked at the issue of did we think we would get a better contract through arbitration? It's important to note that arbitration, the results of arbitration are unknown, and any projections or guesses as to what the result will be is very fraught with uncertainty. When the LCC did take a look at the possible benefits, they noted that the town had got a poor result on healthcare and felt that the town could have achieved their goals. When we looked at that in this contract, it had a gain of about half a million dollars over the four years. The LCC then considered what would happen if the town lost the 0% GWI in year two, which was a key concession the town did get. If instead of a 0%, the town had achieved a 50 basis point GWI, which is still below the other years, all the savings from healthcare would be lost. The LCC also considered the fact that the town already has decided on their own to go to arbitration in two other contracts. The point being here is arbitration in itself is not something to be afraid of. The town can win arbitrations, and it's important to note that a few years back, the RTM actually rejected the Teamsters contract, and the town ultimately did win in arbitration. So arbitrations can definitely be won. The question here, however, was would the LCC recommend going to arbitration on these two contracts? Ultimately, the LCC considered the fact that the town did choose to go to arbitration already in two other contracts. They looked at the cost benefit of going to arbitration in this contract. The LCC voted six to one to postpone indefinitely. The no vote to that felt that because the cost of the contract was so high in terms of benchmarking versus other towns, the Town of Greenwich would win the arbitration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before calling upon, before calling for our next committee report, I do want to report the vote on item 14, and that was the appointment of Megan Galetta to the High School Building Committee. Those in favor, 154; opposed, 59; abstaining, seven. That item is carried. Lucia Jensen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee, has a report on this item.
Yes, do you see me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Good evening. Your Budget Overview Committee voted unanimously to take up the GMEA contract. As mentioned in the LCC report, the contract was reopened between the town and union leaders in June 2020 as the COVID-19 pandemic caused widespread shutdowns and the global economy reached crisis levels. Locally, in June 2020, our schools with 9,000 children had completely closed since mid-March and remained closed until the school year ended. Our town hall was closed, offering only limited business and resident services. Town residents and businesses were also financially suffering. Unemployment spiked to 9%, nearly three times higher from a year earlier. In fact, on our own BOC committee, members were not spared from layoffs and bonus cuts. Now, seven months later, despite some improvements in the economy, Connecticut's future economic outlook remains a serious concern. Just yesterday, in Sunday's local paper, it was reported from a University of Connecticut think tank warning that it will take a decade or longer for the state to recover from the economic fallout. They noted the state is suffering more than others due to our economic weakness prior to the pandemic, with 117,000 high-paying jobs still not recovered from the 2008 Great Recession and now the COVID-19 pandemic only making things worse. Thus, it came as a surprise to all on the BOC that the large $145 million GMEA contract covering nearly 400 employees showed increases far above inflation and insufficient cost control, all negotiated during the COVID-19 pandemic. Some, well, not all negotiated, the final negotiation. Some on the committee felt it inappropriate for employees to receive compensation increases when so many in our community continued to suffer. Others worried about maintaining level services and a low tax burden when union costs rise even further. Others were angry with the town's sparse benchmark information after repeated requests for more and worried the higher cost amounts would pattern other contracts still to be negotiated by the town. Most frustrating was that the area repeatedly identified by the BOC is needing the most reform. Fringe benefits was only marginally improved. 61% of employee costs for the GMEA worker is in fringe benefits, the fifth highest level of the 12 town employee groups, when the town average is 46%. Some have commented, why didn't the BOC inform the town of our goals and specific recommendations in advance of the union's negotiation? They see it seems a little after the fact to complain about the high-cost contract. In fact, four years ago with the 2016-2019 GMEA contract, as with all labor contracts we vote on, the BOC identified and summarized in writing the analysis. Our written summary is precisely done with the intent to inform both current and subsequent labor contracts. The BOC heard a presentation of the LCC's vote to postpone indefinitely the contract, as done so many other times now by the RTM. The committee discussed its options to either postpone indefinitely or reject the contract, given the committee's frustration with the outcome of the contract. Many felt the procedure now is overused and has no effect. The data clearly demonstrated on some terms, namely healthcare, the town would prevail if taken to arbitration. However, other terms might not result in the town's favor. Other members expressed that even if the town did not prevail, it still was worth the effort to arbitrate, particularly since these are unusual times with COVID-19. Ultimately, the committee, with its unanimous unhappiness with the outcome of the contract, decided to vote only to either accept or reject the contract. The BOC's vote was to reject the GMEA contract with a vote of 10, 1, 1. District 10 abstained, and District 6 voted no, with both having a preference to postpone indefinitely. Thank you.
Kimberly Black, Chair of our Education Committee.
Thank you. The Education Committee heard from Emmett Hipson, Director of Labor Relations for the town, Dan Ozsmer, Chair of the Labor Contracts Committee, Peter Bernstein, Chair of the Board of Ed. I'm Regina Williams, Assistant Director of HR for the Board of Ed. They came and presented and answered our committee's questions. The GMEA is a union of technical and clerical workers and includes 122 full-time employees of the Board of Ed and 91 part-time employees of the Board of Ed. Since the substance of the contract and the presentation has been well-covered by others, I will just go on to talk about our vote. Members of the committee, our discussion and vote. Members of our committee raised many concerns about the sharp increases in healthcare costs, the overall cost of the contract, and the potential impact of this contract on future budgets. But we also heard from Mr. Ozsmer and Mr. Hipson that they did not believe it was in the town's best interest to go to arbitration since our GWI increases are lower than state averages. We voted 10 to 0 to postpone the item indefinitely. District 6 and 9 voted no because they believe we should vote the item up or down to show our views on this contract. We did not take a vote on the merits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Basham, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. We had Dan Ozsmer present to us a week ago Monday. Just to give you some background, in addition to Ozsmer presenting, three members of the, three voting members of the Finance Committee are also members of the LCC. And so rather than burden Mr. Hipson, who is had a number of demands on his time, we asked Dan to fill in for him. We agreed with some of the, all of the presentations made by Mr. Ozsmer with respect to the contract for the GMEA. We are in a position where we would recommend that we reject the item as presented in the call. We did take two votes. One vote was to vote on the merits. We voted 11, 1, 0 to reject the contract on the merits. We then voted 12, 0, 0 to recommend to the RTM that we postpone the contract, but the contract indefinitely.
Thank you. Richard Newman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Town Services took this up last Tuesday. We had Josh Brown, a member of Town Services and a member of LCC with us, and we also had Lucia Jensen with us. After what you've just heard from the other presenters, we don't need to go into the details. We did talk about the top dollar that we're paying in peer communities. We did talk about the 401K benefit. We did talk about the low healthcare contribution, though it is increasing, and the increasing cost of healthcare. When we moved to the state plan, we were hoping it would last a little bit longer than, I guess, the two or three years that it's been, that we've been in that plan now. Town Services took two votes. One was as presented on the call to reject the contract, and that vote was 8, 3, 1 in favor of rejecting the contract. And then we took a second vote to postpone indefinitely, and that vote was four in favor, seven against, zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ozsmer, you have a motion. Dan Ozsmer?
Yes, the LCC makes a motion to postpone item 16 indefinitely.
All right, that offered on behalf of one of our committees. It does not require a second. Discussion on the motion to postpone item 16 indefinitely. We did have one speaker sign up for item 16, so I will recognize Brian Rainey if he would like to address this. We're now speaking on the motion to postpone indefinitely, but comments may go to the merits of the item. Brian Rainey, District 9.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Rainey, District 9. I urge you to vote against the motion to postpone indefinitely. This should go to arbitration. This is a very rich contract, as we've heard, really surprisingly so. We got some work rule changes, which are nice, but there's a problem, whether it's communication problem, process gap, whatever it is. The targets that the RTM is expecting for these contracts don't seem to be actually making it in negotiation. We expect certainly, you know, modest increases, increases that relate to the rate of inflation for the overall cost of contract. Otherwise, it's just not sustainable to keep going up over inflation. That means that, you know, our taxes will go up or our services will be cut or some combination thereof. You know, if your taxes go up, you can't really sell your home. That's not a good strategy. So the real comparison there is with the rate of inflation. At this time, many, many people are still out of work. Many people had to take forced pay cuts. Forget about bonuses, actual pay cuts in base due to the COVID panic and pandemic. So I urge you to vote against postponing indefinitely so that we can vote to reject this contract and send it to arbitration. And hopefully in the future, we can resolve the gap communication or process with our negotiators. Obviously, we've had turnover in the negotiator role. But again, I urge you to vote against postponing indefinitely and vote to reject the contracts. And I will save my time for the next one by saying same thing for item 17.
Thank you. All right, we had no other speakers signed up. Is there any further discussion on the motion to postpone item 16 indefinitely? Again, attendees need to quickly notify your district representative if you would like to speak here.
Hello, Mr. Moderator, District 1?
Yes.
I have Dean Goss wishing to speak.
All right, Dean Goss, District 1. And then, was there another one? Dean Goss.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Just real briefly, I, now, I've been in the RTM, I guess, four and a half years now, and I appreciate the idea of postponing indefinitely. But I think we just need to be a little stricter and, you know, step up our rigor on these things in that, you know, they didn't, if the comparables weren't there for the contract, if the healthcare is below peer averages, et cetera. If we don't like the contract, we should just vote against it. And I, you know, I would just argue, as Brian did a few minutes ago. And I know a lot of people, though, have worked very hard on this thing, but it just seems to be the same old thing, the same old thing. And it's not unreasonable to expect the workers to pay the same healthcare that everybody else is paying in town. And, you know, I just think we should reject the thing outright and quit kicking the can down the road and just take a stand on these things. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Labor Contracts Committee motion to postpone item 16 indefinitely.
Mr. Moderator, it's Mike Basham.
Yes.
Could we have Emmett Hipson give us his assessment of how we might prevail in arbitration?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Could we have the town negotiator, Emmett Hipson, give us his assessment of how we might prevail or not prevail in arbitration?
Mr. Hipson, are you able to answer that question? Did you hear that question?
Mr. Moderator, I did hear the question, and I am able to answer that question.
Go ahead.
So part of what I do when I review a contract and decide to recommend its approval is do an analysis to determine whether it makes sense to go to arbitration or whether it makes sense to move forward with a recommendation to the RTM to approve the contract. Heard a lot about the going to arbitration, the pass of the Teamsters. So I did go take a look at the Teamsters arbitration that was handled in 2017, 18. And I know you guys consider that to be a win. So I want to kind of run through that and then run through this contract and let you know why I believe it makes sense that you either postpone indefinitely or approve this contract. There were 12 issues that were raised in the Teamsters negotiation, Teamsters arbitration. Of those, six were wages, four were supplemental retirement. And on issue by issue, the town won seven issues, the union won five issues. Going to wages, this was a three-year contract. The town submitted 1.5% for. The town submitted 1.5% for each year of the contract. The union submitted 2.25, 2.25, and 2.25. The TA that was rejected was a three-year 2.25. The arbitrators awarded 2.25, 2.25, and 1.5. So for wages, you won a one-year issue at 1.5, which was the town's position in arbitration. What you have before you, so that came out to, by the way, 6% over three years. What you have before you for wages is for GMEA, under 6% for four years, to an average of 1.475. So we'd be going in with positions lower than what was done in Teamsters two years ago and asking to win all issues. I do not see that as a winnable position, quite frankly. As it relates to healthcare, one of the main things I've been hearing is about the Board of Ed, GOCHA, and the GEA. One, they received raises. They do have higher cost shares, but they're about 16%. You're getting to 14%, and those individuals received raises and make a much higher salary. So from a percentage basis, you will see the lower wage earners have a higher percentage of what the cost of their benefits are, just because it's going against a smaller base. But at 14% from a, if you're looking at it from the side of arbitration, from the percentage of what they're paying, it's a higher percentage of salary. And I, from a, from a comparable group, first off, the Board of Ed unions would not even be considered comparable group in a municipal arbitration. Board of Eds are not considered comparable for police, for fire, for regular general government positions. They were not submitted, the Board of Ed was not submitted as a comparable in the Teamsters arbitration. So when you look at those, what you're looking at is between 12 and 15% between the comparables that are relevant to an arbitration. So I would say that going to arbitration and risking under 2% per year, risking under 1.5% per year on a four-year, where that was better than what you consider to be a win in arbitration, the Teamsters, I would say does not make any sense to me. It was not something I'd recommend. I wholeheartedly recommend you approving this. I don't think you'll do any better. And on top of that, it's a delay of a year before you receive any benefit of that. The last contract that you rejected, the Teamsters, was brought to you in December of 17. The final award was approved by the RTM in January of 18. So, excuse me, December 16, January 16 to January 17 was a full year before you received any change in the contract. So I, I don't see the year delay in the wages as a benefit to go into arbitration. I think that you should approve this contract or vote to postpone indefinitely.
All right. Mr. Hibson, I know the town attorney is present at this meeting, but we use separate labor counsel for these negotiations, correct?
That is correct.
Is labor counsel present at this meeting?
He is not.
All right. So I think it bears some discussion. We last had quite a bit of discussion on the procedural posture of these labor contracts several years ago, but we have a lot of new members, and I think it, it would be beneficial if we try and explain why these contracts are presented the way they are and where this motion to postpone indefinitely fits in to the Connecticut statutory framework. You, you, Mr. Hibson, just, just recommended that the RTM approve this contract. And my understanding is these contracts automatically go into effect unless the legislative body rejects them. The RTM has no authority to approve, other than, if you want to say, if you don't reject, you're approving.
I disagree with that interpretation of statute. The statute says approve or reject within 30 days of the 14-day lapse.
But it goes into effect automatically.
If you don't vote, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
The reason the resolution is worded to reject is so that there's no question. Some have argued that if the language was to approve and there was a majority no vote, that that does not necessarily constitute a rejection. So to avoid that potential problem, the resolution is worded to reject. We've heard the discussion of our committees that if we reject a ghost arbitration, and we know that there is a downside, and now that you've put on the record what you just did, the chances of our succeeding is probably lower than, than before. I want to read what the purpose of a motion to postpone indefinitely is, as stated in Robert's rules. Postpone indefinitely is a motion that the assembly declined to take a position on the main question. Its adoption kills the main motion and avoids a direct vote on the question. It is useful in disposing of a main motion that cannot be either adopted or expressly rejected without possibly undesirable consequences. So, you know, that's the reason that our procedure has evolved this way. So that's all. I just wanted to give some background to that. We are still discussing the motion to postpone indefinitely. Is there further discussion on that motion? Pardon? Lucia Jensen?
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate it. I would like to comment to the presentation made by Mr. Hibson. First and foremost, when the RTM went to arbitration with the Teamster contract, it was the Great Recession of 2008 when we went, when we went. So there was another catalyst there that was very unusual in an arbitration setting. We are now in even more of an unusual setting with hopefully a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. So I do not believe when we go to arbitration, we are in a business-as-usual kind of discussion. Second, the Teamster contract, bar none, saved the town millions of dollars. Yes, we did not win every term that we arbitrated. However, a key one was the last-year wage increase of 1.5%. And that amount, we had eight labor union contracts that subsequently patterned to that 1.5%. That $800,000 savings in Teamsters followed into millions with subsequent contracts. Third, the town has sparse to limited benchmark data. However, the BOC is replenished with data. And on healthcare, wages, job title comparisons, there is an amazing amount of data that will substantiate the town's position, if so desired. Another area, the 401K. That was something that the Teamsters, we, we prevailed in a very big way. The town provides a 401K flat fee amount in addition to the standard employee match in a 401K. In this contract, it amounts to about $1 million. Again, terms that the BOC has identified for years, I'm not going to go into all of them, but there is money on the table that was available there to be negotiated in this COVID-19 pandemic. The contract was reopened in June 2020, and those items were not put on the table. So enough is enough. The postpone indefinitely has not met the goals that we had started with in 2016 when we started to use it. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, District 1, Frederick Lee. I have Carl Carlson on the, would like to speak.
All right. Can we allow Carlson?
Carl, Carl Carlson. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, am I on now?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. About 25 years ago, I discussed the labor contracts with Mr. Jack Anner, who was on the Labor Contracts Committee at the time. Mr. Anner, if I remember correctly, had a career as a labor lawyer. Mr. Anner said he thought it was in the favor of the town to go to arbitration. I think he was the only member of Labor Contracts Committee those days who thought that. I concurred with Mr. Anner, and I still think he was right. And especially on this contract, we are in a turbulent change in this country. What we're looking at, I think, coming in the next few years, is a lot of economic trouble. Our past view, with the exception of the last eight months or so, had been a pretty good economic situation. I think we're headed into an unsatisfactory economic situation for a number of years to come, where there will be a feeling that deflation is just coming down on us on a, like a light rain. And I suggest that in view of the troubled times, that we take care of the people in the town and we reject this contract. We do not put it off indefinitely, but tonight we vote this down. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely?
Mr. Moderator, I have Don Conway from District 2.
All right. Mr. Conway? And if there are, if there are others, please, now is the time to contact your district representative. Don Conway, could be followed by?
Okay. Hello? Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I would recommend that we do not turn down this, that we turn down this contract, that we do not postpone it. They are getting the best deal in the world in this contract, better than any other town in the state of Connecticut. Why are we doing this during this time when so many people are out of work, especially people in our town that have high tax rolls and, and have problems with their jobs, or hopefully they're not getting problems? But in the meantime, why should we saddle our people, our own town people? And these tax, these teachers and so forth are not really residents of our town. We're paying the taxes in this town. So I think we have to finally step up, do not give in anymore. Let's take a stand right now. Thank you.
Lucy Krasner, District 5.
Uh, okay.
There's feedback.
Okay. All I want to say briefly is that if our town negotiator feels that we should postpone indefinitely to meet that...
Excuse me, Lucy Krasner, you have to shut off the microphone on one of your two devices.
I'm trying to do that. Okay, I think we're okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. I was trying to say that if our town negotiator spoke to us with details about his view that we should postpone indefinitely, I think that's an expertise that we should not reject, and therefore I think we should go along and postpone indefinitely. I think his views should be considered with greater impact than other people who have spoken, who are not town negotiators. Therefore, I agree with him, and I think we should postpone indefinitely.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Labor Contracts Committee motion postpone Item 16 indefinitely and proceed to pull your delegation out. Listen, if you are in favor of avoiding a vote on whether to reject this contract or not, you should vote yes. A yes vote will send this off our agenda without our taking a vote on whether to reject it or not. If you want to take up the resolution as it appears on the call, you should vote no on this motion to postpone Item 16 indefinitely. All right, let's start the clock. All right. I just wanted to give you a status report. We have to await the result of this vote. We only have three out of the 12 districts at the moment, so we're, we will just continue to play the music. There will be no timer, as we can't continue until we, we know the final result. We have the result of the vote on the LCC motion to postpone Item 16 indefinitely. Those in favor, 136; opposed, 78; abstaining, 2. That motion postponed indefinitely has carried. Item 17 now comes before us. Mr. Hibson?
Thank you. This is the Launa contract, resolved at the representative town meeting, exercise the authority pursuant to General Statute, Section 7474B. Hereby rejects the funds necessary to implement the terms of the town Launa Local 136 collective bargaining agreement covering fiscal year 1920, fiscal year 2021. Said funds having previously been appropriated in the adopted fiscal year 1920 and fiscal year 2021 budgets. In addition thereto, the representative town meeting rejects the funds necessary to implement the terms, the town Launa Local 136 collective bargaining agreement covering the period fiscal year 21, 22, and fiscal year 22, 23, subject to the budgetary process described in the town charter.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 17 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports again? Mr. Ozismer, do you care to add anything further?
Yes, thank you. Again, as I said before, everything I said about Item 16 should apply in this case in terms of healthcare GWI. I'm going to focus more on some of the items in this contract that make it a little different. First, the size of this contract is 134 million. Again, it's a very large contract over four years. The second thing really to note is that there are a lot of Nathaniel Witherall employees within this bargaining unit. We also achieved a 0% in the second year, like we did in the GMEA. Some of the differences are in terms of how the Nathaniel Witherall employees are handled. First thing is that instead of the around 6% wages over four years, the Nathaniel Witherall employees are receiving 4.5% instead of 6% over four years. In addition, in only one of the years is that GWI increase applied to their base wages. In the other two years, the GWI is a one-time bonus. Okay? This is the first time this has been done with the Nathaniel Witherall employees. This has previously been done with town attorneys. In fact, our town attorneys are also a part of the Launa contract, and the, the town attorneys also got all of their GWI with a one-year bonus as opposed to part of their, part of their base wage. So with regard to Nathaniel Witherall, that was a concession that the town did achieve. The second thing the town did achieve is that they were able to eliminate weekend shift differentials at the Nathaniel Witherall. Again, it's important that people understand that, like public safety, police, fire, Nathaniel Witherall is, you know, seven-day, 24/7 operation, so the idea of weekends or holidays really doesn't apply in the same way. So the town has been looking to make reforms there. They were able to achieve one of these reforms, which is to eliminate the weekend shift differential. The, the cost of the contract average over the four years was 2.45. The, um, the cost of the contract average over the four years was 2.45. So those are the major issues on the contract. Before going through the votes, I would just like to make a couple of comments based upon the discussion of item 16. While we really appreciate and listen very carefully to the expertise of Emmett Hipson, our labor negotiator, on many issues, certainly concerning questions of arbitration, I just do want to emphasize to the RTM that ultimately it's up to us and our committees to do our own work and to take our own views on that question. Second thing I'd like to note, and I did mention it before, but, you know, there's a lot of talk about arbitration being an issue and, and a risk. And although that's true, I do want to remind people that the town itself, Emmett himself, has already decided to arbitrate two of the five contracts that we're going to be dealing with in this cycle. So again, the real question for the RTM is that do we want to take a different view? And just to summarize the previous discussion, the last time the RTM did take that decision, it in fact did work out. So everyone has to take the view now, if the RTM takes the decision this time, will it work out? It's my view and the view of the LCC that in this case, the, the town would be better off not arbitrating this. To give people a context on the other two contracts that the town is arbitrating, one is fire, where the fire decided not to go to defined contribution pension plan, whereas our, our police in the last year and a half did decide without arbitration to go to defined contribution. And the second is, the Teamsters in this current cycle have decided not to accept zero GWI in fiscal '21, which is different than the nurses, GMEA, and Launa. So the Teamsters were not willing to accept a zero in fiscal year '21, and that's the reason the town is arbitrating that. So with that said, the LCC took the same votes. We voted six to one to reject the contract on the merits, due to all the other reasons discussed, because the contract's very rich. Um, and then we voted six to one to postpone indefinitely for the same reasons discussed in GMEA. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chair of the Budget Overview Committee.
Okay, good evening again. The Budget Overview Committee voted unanimously to take up the Launa contract. The contract is the third largest of all town unit, unions, covering 261 managerial employees, who are right below the level of the 51 management confidential employees. They are across 47 town departments, so it's virtually all areas of the town. As just mentioned, it is a very large contract of 134 million, and it's retroactive to 2019 through 2023. Yet again, the BOC submitted in the last Launa contract from 2018, written documentation, call to action for cost reform, that in this contract were largely ignored. Most of the identified areas and increases were related to inflation rate, which is 1.4%, and this increases over the four years to 9.81%. We had limited to almost nonexistent benchmark information to justify the outcome of this contract. As an example, a prominent group in this contract are the full and part-time employees at Nathaniel Witherall. We noted that there were some modest changes as described in the LCC report. However, it simply does not address the scope of the cost issues at our municipal-run nursing home. For example, the BOC discussed the BET's 2017 Special Committee Report, that identified above all else, the top constraint in a municipal-run nursing home is the high labor costs. In their own benchmark analysis, the BET reported our nursing home labor costs at 30% higher, unjust wages, not yet factoring in the fringe benefits. This is before this current contract before you. That benchmark did not account for these new increases. And we see profoundly the outcome in the budget with the fiscal year '21 budget that had a $5.6 million subsidy to cover losses in Nathaniel Witherall. Now we see in fiscal year '22, in the draft BET guidelines, a new Nathaniel Witherall subsidy of 2.5 million. Once again, all BOC members unanimously were unhappy with the outcome of the contract. The committee discussion again was to either postpone indefinitely or to reject the contract. The BOC took up only one vote, which was to reject the contract. The vote was nine, one, two. District Six and Ten abstained, and District Four voted no to reject on the merits. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Blank, Chair of our Education Committee.
Hi. The Education Committee heard from the same group of presenters on item 17 as we did on item 16. And for context, the Launa bargaining unit includes 21 supervisors who are assigned to the Board of Education. Our discussion was largely similar to our discussion on the GMEA contract. While we heard concerns about the high cost of the contract and the amount by which GWIs exceed inflation, none of the presenters advised that it was in the town's interest to reject the contract and bring it to arbitration. We voted 10, 2, 0 to postpone the item indefinitely. District Six and Nine voted no, because they believe that we should vote the item up or down to show our views on this contract. Thank you.
Michael Bash, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you. We did, we heard from Mr. Ozasmir on this contract as well. We listened to essentially the same comments. We actually considered both items 16 and 17 together. With respect to item 17, particularly with respect to the portion of the contract that applied to Nathaniel Witherall, several of the committee members were concerned, raised the issues about, since we have such high-paid staff at Nathaniel Witherall. In fact, it does the fact that we're actually losing money on an annual basis provide the town with any leverage with respect to negotiating with Nathaniel Witherall. And the observation was made that we've been losing money on Nathaniel Witherall as long as the town feels comfortable continuing to subsidize Nathaniel Witherall. It really doesn't provide us with any, with, with a significant leverage in terms of these negotiations. After that, we then voted again, as we did on both contracts combined. We voted 11, 1, 0 to reject on the merits, and then we voted 12, 0, 0 to recommend to the RTM we postpone this contract indefinitely.
Thank you. Richard Newman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Town Services took up this item. Similar discussions to what you've heard. We also took two votes as the item was brought before us to reject the contract. We voted 8, 3, 1. And then we took a second vote to postpone indefinitely. And that vote was four in favor, seven against, one abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ozasmir, offering a motion on behalf of your committee.
Yes, the LCC makes a motion to postpone item 17 indefinitely.
All right. I will call for discussion on this. I think, you know, we've heard discussion on item 16, so if you have something new to say, certainly, but let's try not to repeat. Mr. Rainey, I think you said that you had no intention, that you had made your points previously. Is that right?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, further discussion on labor, on labor contracts, motion to postpone item 17 indefinitely. All right, hearing done, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? LCC motion to postpone item 17 indefinitely. Once again, if you want to take this up on the merits and vote on the resolution as it appears in the call, you should vote no on this motion to postpone. If you want to send this off our agenda tonight, right now, you should vote yes. Once again, we'll need to await a final tally here. So we'll, we'll run the clock, we'll play the music, but we're not going to come back until we have the final. All right, we, we have the result of the vote on the motion to postpone item 17 indefinitely. Those in favor, 158; opposed, 58; abstaining, 4. That motion has carried. Item 18 now comes before us. Mr. Bergweyer.
Uh, yes. Excuse me. On behalf of the Legislative Rules Committee, resolved that section 103.7 of the rules of the representative town meeting shall be amended as follows. It is as it appears on the call.
All right. And this is to amend the second reading rule so that it would not apply to petition resolutions solely because they're petitions.
Correct.
Reports of the committees that considered this, so all the committees. Kimberly Blank, Chair of our Education Committee.
Thank you. Our committee voted against this change to the rules by a vote 4, 6, 2. Districts Three, Seven, Ten, and Twelve voted in favor. Districts Two, Four, Six, Eight, Nine, and Eleven voted against. Districts One and Five abstained. Those in favor felt that there was no real difference between items that are brought by petition versus items that make it onto the call through other means. If an item brought by petition is so complicated that it requires additional consideration, then we always have the ability to postpone it or refer it to another committee before taking action. In the case of SOMRs, they may be brought by petition because they ask the RTM to opine on an issue that is time-sensitive. Requiring a second read hampers our ability to move quickly. Some were concerned that requiring a second read takes up additional RTM time and slows us down unnecessarily. Those opposed felt that it was wise to have a second read when items are brought by petition. They felt that the nature of petition is that a small body of people can force the RTM to consider an issue, and that if we are forced to move quickly on it, especially if it is an emotionally charged issue, there may not be enough time to spread the word broadly throughout town to allow more people to weigh in. They said that we always have the option to vote to suspend the rules and do away with a second reading. One of the abstainers said that he felt the idea of a second read is good in theory, but in practice, he feels that it has been used to kill things inappropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob McKnight, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Great. Our committee considered this second reading amendment offered by the Legislative Rules Committee. Both sides of the issue were summarized, and then input was received from all attending members and alternates. Our vote to recommend was 8, 3, 1.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Yes, hi. The committee began by discussing the second read rule that was approved by the RTM last September, last September 2019, that had overwhelming RTM support of 165 to 16. And the BOC in that vote was unanimous, 11, 0, 0, in favor of the full second read provision. We did go through the explanatory comments from the 2019 September call with the rationale. Just in general, for those who don't remember, that petitions are well-intentioned, but they're often flawed and need considerable work, which takes time, and very disorganized process on the floor. A member in favor of one read said that in the event that it's a SOMAR, that SOMRs have no force of law but are enormously time-consuming with the second read requirement. However, an alternative view to that is that SOMRs do carry tremendous weight to the intended body that it's directed, even though there is no force of law. The BOC vote was 1, 9, 1. District 10 voted yes. District Six abstained since she wanted more information on the matter. Thank you.
Mike Bash, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Yes, thank you. I ask our Vice Chairman Brooks Harris to present this to the committee. He noted as well that the rule that was the second read rule that was recommended by the Governance Committee passed last December, 165 to 16. The intent behind it was, from the standpoint of items that come before the RTM, usually committees really, there's only about a week's time between the time the committees take this up and the RTM is asked to vote on it, which is limited time. And the Governance Committee felt that members probably needed more time to be able, be in a position to make more informed votes. He went on to note that a, he was really referring to one of the SOMRs that came up this past May, particularly the one with respect to the BOE's budget. He noted that if that SOMAR had been presented by a district or by a committee, it actually would not have required a second read. The fact that it was brought by a citizen petition obviously required a second read. As far as, it, it's clear from the perspective of, of this, that the proponents of this really see the, using a citizen's petition that only requires 20 signatures, it's easier to get what might be perceived as more controversial items in front of the RTM for a vote, as opposed to having to go through a committee or a district. With respect to the BOE, again, the second rule was invoked because it did not receive enough to be voted on that night. And at that time, there were some issues outstanding as to exactly how much money the BOE might be, might have available as a result of their bus contract and other savings they might have accrued through the closure of the schools. In fact, when the final budget was presented to the BET, they in fact saved a substantial amount, substantially more money than we had anticipated, anticipated, which really eliminated the need for the SOMAR. And in fact, the proponents of it, you know, withdrew it in September. In that instance, the second read rule actually served its intended purpose. As far as SOMRs themselves, I personally went back and looked at the calls for 2018 and 2019. During that 24-month period, there were five SOMRs that were presented to the RTM. We've had four presented to the RTM in the last three meetings. I think that eliminating the second read requirement for petition resolutions probably would result in a proliferation, you know, of potentially more SOMRs, some of them controversial, that would put RTM members in a position of having to vote on something without the benefit of time to make more informed votes. We decided that we were opposed to this change. We voted 0, 11, 1 in opposition. District Eight wanted, I had hoped someone from LNR had been, would have been present to present the LNR position on it. No one was, no one was able to attend. We had meetings, meeting at the same time. Again, we voted 0, 11, 1 in opposition.
Alexis Wilgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. Our vote was an even split of 6, 6. Those that voted in favor of the item felt that the need for the second, that, those that voted in favor of the item felt that the second reading rule for petitioned items that are non-ordinance, charter, or rule change-related unnecessarily prolonged the deliberation and voting process. Those opposed to the, those opposed to this resolution felt that it was important to keep the existing second read rule in place to help cement good and deliberate process. It was also noted that at any point, a motion to suspend the rules could be offered when it comes before us for a first read, and that if the body votes in favor of such a motion, the item could be taken up without the requirement of second read. So again, we were evenly split, 6, 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Ozasmir, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
The Labor Contracts Committee took this item up. I won't repeat much of what was said. I think there's two points I would make. One is that it's important to realize that most of the things the RTM votes on have gone through a very significant amount of review. For example, if it's the budget, it's gone through months and months of review by the Board of Ed, the First Selectmen, the departments, the BET, public hearings, et cetera. If it's an ordinance, it's gone through a first and second read by the Board of Selectmen, in addition to review by legal, departments, et cetera. So there's public hearings, there's first and second reads. These are all the things that occur before it comes to the RTM. The LCC was concerned that a petition could come from, with 20 signatures, where the RTM would basically have one to two weeks to take a review without the benefit of all the other items that were mentioned. The, the LCC also noted, to what Alexis mentioned, is that if there's truly an urgent issue, the two-thirds majority to suspend the rules is, is completely reasonable and expect-
expected. For example, a few years ago, there was an issue with, in the North Myannis area with some cell towers that were concerned to the residents. The, the RTM was very quickly and overwhelmingly able to accommodate that request and issue. So if it's truly a quote, no-brainer, the two-thirds is not a real hurdle. If it's anything more than a no-brainer, the LCC felt that the second read was entirely appropriate. The vote was one to six. Thank you.
Captain Mabalvo, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and body of the RTM. Park and Rec took this up last Tuesday. It was discussed whether the, whether the second read as far as petitions gave the perspective and buffer of time for items or whether we already have metrics within Robert's rules to give an item a further review. For example, the ability to refer to committee and the ability to postpone by vote. That the second read was possibly obstructing, delaying, and interfering with the process of openly evaluating and listening to our constituents as with a variety of SOMARs. Things were discussed as well as the item that was on our consent calendar this evening, which was required to have a second read. However, no further information was needed. Yet, the second read motion was not taken up. So we had to evaluate an item again, but really that process could have moved a lot quicker. That this was a definition of bureaucratic red tape in, in the case of something like that consent item that we have here tonight, which was the slow no-wake zone. And really only serving to extend and delay process. The vote was ultimately 11, 1, 0. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Spiloe, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works took up this item. After discussion, the vote was three in favor, nine opposed. Members opposing saw no reason for a change. Others felt that the RTM vote can vote to suspend the rules without a second read if there was a strong consensus. At the point, others pointed out that there are several ways to get items on the call without a petition and that those other routes may be more appropriate. And some felt the second read provides for more thoughtful consideration and analysis with less emotional content. Again, our vote was three, nine, zero.
Thank you. Richard Newman, Chair of our Transportation Committee.
Town Services voted against this five, seven, zero. We did discuss that this was a fairly new rule for this term, brought by the Governance Committee and overwhelmingly voted positively last year. Committees and districts can bring a SOMAR that does, only requires one read. A second read can be avoided with a two-thirds vote, and this does allow the RTM to better understand complicated issues if it's needed. Again, we voted five, seven, zero against the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Saleh, Chair of our Transportation Committee.
Hello, good evening. The Transportation Committee took up item 18 and we voted four in favor, seven opposing, and no abstaining with D9 absent. D2, D4, D5, and D12 voted for this item. And we discussed many of the issues that have already been presented here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item 18. Mr. Oz's mayor to be followed by Brian Rainey.
I defer my time. Thank you.
Mr. Rainey to be followed by Mr. Spiloe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd, I'd like to point out that the first three triggers of the second reading rule are all with regard to content or subject matter of the, the item before us. And they are all, they all have legal standing, including our RTM rules, which are our bylaws. The method of petition is the only method included in there. That seems to be apples and oranges. And if a petition brings a, a charter change, an ordinance change, or a rule change, it would still be subject to the second reading rule. The other things that we might get via petition are frankly, you know, less important. And I would say that the, the first three, charters, ordinances, and rules, along with our budget responsibilities, are, are our primary focus and the, the other things that we get, especially by petition, just don't warrant a second read to, to be sure of ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Spiloe, District 11.
I would say that the difference between petition and other types of items is the method in which it gets on the call that, as Mr. Oz's mayor pointed out, requires less scrutiny by the rest of the RTM. So something appears on the call and then has a week of deliberations and is up for a vote when that something is brought by any 20 town members. This can result in hasty or ill-considered votes and therefore I think taking the time to consider things which do have impact, such as the SOMARs that have come before us, is appropriate. I would, I would vote against this.
Further discussion on item 18.
Mr. Moderator, District 1. Mr. Moderator, District 1, I have Andrea Anthony would like to speak.
All right, Andrea Anthony.
Yes, correct.
You need to unmute yourself, please. Ms. Anthony, you need to unmute yourself and then you may speak.
You hear me now?
Yes.
I did not ask to speak.
All right. Further discussion on item 18. All right. This is a proposal to change our rules, which is subject to our second reading requirement. Absent a motion to suspend that rule, this will go on the call for December. So that brings us to the conclusion of our agenda tonight. I want to thank all those in the team here at Town Hall for making this possible. It's an incredible effort. So I thank Alexis Volgares, Kimberly Stazano, Jenny Larkin, and Craig Jones for bringing this to you as in a clear and organized way. And I wish everyone a happy Halloween and we shall meet again in December. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Stay well.